All right. Hello. Thank you so much for waiting while we work out some technical difficulties. We thought we'd be able to use the owl camera tonight. But it is not to be, so I appreciate your patience. We will not be answering questions out of the Q and A tonight, just to let people know, because I think sometimes there are some misunderstandings around that. And we'll accept public input in person. So. We have just returned from executive session in which we discussed matters covered under exception three of the mass open meeting law to discuss issues related to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. The discussions pertain to the Medfield Teachers Association units A and B and the AFL-CIO Custodians, Cafeteria Workers and Secretaries units. So I will now call to order the September 9th, 2021 regular business meeting of the Medfield School Committee. Tim Knight will not be with us this evening, nor will our student representative Carrie White, but we do expect her to be here next, uh, next meeting on October 9th or October 7th. So to open, uh, may I have a roll call, please? All right. Uh, Megan Glenn. Sorry, you may have to put up with some echo. Uh, okay. And. Anime O'Shea Brook. Anime O'Shea Brook, okay. Thank you. I appreciate you, uh, out there in TV land, helping us muddle through. I also want to let you know that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Medfield TV YouTube channel as well. So at this point, I'll call for public input. And after I read the statement, which is citizens at this time may address the committee on items of school business not on the agenda. The committee will take such items under advisement without action or discussion at this time at the meeting in which the item is presented. And if you would like to offer public input, please approach the podium. I will turn my computer if anybody would like to. Uh, and give your name and address. There is one person here, and he has indicated that he is not going to give public input right now. So. We will move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of August 16th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve? All right, anime. Leo. Near you, I don't know. Okay. See, when I, when I unmute myself, this is what happens. On mute, but it's. Hello. Oh, okay. Then it was yours. Okay. Um, I just wanted to ask if the parent input form was going to be part of these notes, these minutes? Yes. Okay. Thank you. They did not. Yeah, they were not attached, so I didn't know if that was. Okay. Then proceed. And wow, that was a lot for me to just get to say that. Sorry. All right. My apologies if there are this kind of audio difficulties tonight. It does feel a little bit like September 2020 right now, but we will work through this. Okay. Um, so do I? So anime offered a motion to approve. Do you continue that motion? Okay. And Leo Bram, you seconded? So, uh, all in favor? We can say aye finally. Aye, 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 aye. Okay. The pa- motion passes unanimously. Okay. Uh, I'm going to move on to new business, but with the committee's blessing, um, I'd like to adjust the order of the agenda a little bit. So that we kind of proceed with summer projects and the fiscal year 22. So summer projects and fiscal year 22. Uh, budget update, and then we'll move to the more school committee specific items around, uh, policy and communication and, um, the other item. So with that, Michael, would you like to, uh, take it away? Let me turn down my volume.
Yep. And I'm you, thank you. So, um, we were very busy this summer with, um, summer projects. Uh, we had two years worth of summer projects, uh, that needed to be completed this summer. Uh, I'm just gonna start with, um, what we did for the, all the schools, and then I'll go individually at the different schools. So, um, for all schools, we purchased new, uh, entrance mats. That was something that we were scheduled to do last year, but we did this year. All the carpets in all the schools, uh, were professionally cleaned. Uh, we wanted to make sure that students enter the building, uh, especially with COVID, that we had a professional service coming in and, um, uh, clean all the carpets. Uh, fences around all schools, uh, were either, uh, adjusted or fixed. Uh, there's a couple still remaining, um, but we're waiting for supplies in order to finish those. And, um, as usual, all classrooms had, um, this summer, a deep cleaning. Uh, we did floor waxing, um, and then we had to reset the classrooms back to normal, uh, as they were in 2019. At the high school, um, I'm gonna just bring up my presentation here. So at the high school, we, um, we had the bus canopy, which, uh, was scheduled to be, um, redone last year in 2020, but because of, uh, COVID, uh, everything was delayed. Um, materials and, um, vendors were delayed. So we, uh, ended up doing that project this summer. As you can see from the left, that was, uh, that the, that area was decaying due to the, the water pipes that broke, um, inside the walls. We had to take them apart. We had to change all the piping. Uh, we used a different material that was, um, uh, better for our climate here in the Northeast. Um, and then we, um, rewrapped those, um, columns. Um, currently, we're waiting for the final wrap to come in. Uh, that material is coming in from Canada, and it's been delayed six to eight weeks. Uh, but as you can see in the right, it does look, uh, more presentable, but that is not the final, um, covering for those, um, columns coming down. Uh, that work is almost complete. Like I said, we're just waiting for the final materials to come in, um, on that project. Here in the library, as you can see, the, we, uh, redid the carpet. Um, so that's new carpeting, um, which is the picture on the left. And if you look at the picture on the right, we, I, we try to take a picture of before and after. Um, so as you can see, the front part of that picture is the better lighting. All the lighting in this, uh, room have been retrofitted. Um, and that was through, uh, a grant that we did. Um, and as it's, it's lighter, it's brighter, uh, it's better for students, and we, uh, got this entire library also repainted. Uh, also here at the high school, we did a rooftop unit. We replaced the rooftop unit over, uh, the library. That was one that, uh, due to the over-usage during COVID because of the 80% to 85% air, uh, fresh air intake, um, that unit was, uh, it burnt out, so we had to replace that one. So that was a brand new, it's a brand new unit over here, over the, uh, library. We also did exterior lights. Uh, we repaired all the exterior lights in, um, uh, on the exterior of the building. Uh, we'd worked on control wiring, our communication wire replaced throughout the building, um, for the heating and cooling communication, so we have a new system in place. Um, and outreach, we fixed, uh, a broken pipe that was, um, underneath the surface that was repaired. We also did a lot of, um, AC units in the classrooms that, uh, needed to be repaired. At the auditorium, uh, we repaired the, uh, AC unit in the auditorium. Um, that was a, a motherboard that needed to be replaced again. That was delayed for four months due to, uh, uh, COVID. And then, uh, we had, we replaced the fire alarm panel here at the high school. Um, and as I said, the rooftop unit was, uh, also replaced. That's frozen. It looks like I got thrown off of Wi-Fi. Okay. So at, there we go. So at, we locked the school nurse's office. We replaced the tiles, um, in the nurse's office. That was a project that was scheduled for 2020, but delayed to 2021. Principal's office, uh, carpet was replaced. Water bottle filling stations were installed, um, at Wheelock. Outdoor painting of the curbs would re, were done. New furniture for the library, which was actually ordered in 2019, or is finally, um, installed in 2021. And we replaced the, uh, old clock system at Wheelock. Um, at Memorial. Um, we also, uh, replaced the, um, water bubble filling stations, um, at Memorial. I believe we put in two, uh, new blacktop area outside. The doors leading to the playground was resurfaced by, uh, the DPW. Uh, and we also did, um, new concrete, uh, right outside of the kitchen, and that was done, uh, in September. Fire line panel was also replaced at the, um, at Memorial. And then at the Blake Middle School, we renovated the entire gymnasium. Again, a, a project that was due to be, it was scheduled to be done in 2020, uh, pushed back to the 2000s, and it just got kicked off. So, um, so that was. Thank you. Pull that one up. Uh, so the gymnasium floor was refinished at the Blake Middle School. Uh, gymnasium walls were, uh, painted. The, uh, we took out the old bleachers, uh, and are waiting for the new bleachers to come in. They were scheduled to come in, uh, on July 15th, uh, the last that we heard, uh, that should be coming in at the end of September. Those bleachers have been delayed again as the manufacturers can't get, um, the, the plastic needed to manufacture the bleachers. Uh, but the, the last update we had, which was a few days ago, uh, that they should be coming in, in September, um, we put new window, uh, film, uh, on the gyms, uh, on the gym windows. Uh, the old system where they had the blinders keep on, uh, either falling or breaking when, uh, students, you know, uh, are playing in, in, in the gymnasium. So we came with the new system, which is the, the window film system, um, where they darken the windows so that the sun can still come in, but it doesn't affect the, the kids while they're playing in the gym. So that entire gymnasium was, um, refurbished. Uh, we also did, um, miscellaneous air conditioning throughout the building. And the other big, uh, project that happened in, um, at Blake was the glycol flushing. Uh, so what glycol is, it's, it's a chemical that they put into the heating system to keep the heating system running. Every 10, every seven to 10 years, that needs to be flushed out. Otherwise, it blocks the different sections within the heating system to run smoothly because it becomes more like, um, kind of like a pace. And, uh, that hadn't been done in at least, God, 15 to 20 years, we were told. Uh, so when they went in to flush it, we were, had to replace certain sections of the heating system because they were blocked because that, that deferred maintenance hadn't been done in a while. Now, we, we do have a system in place since the 20-year capital plan that was put in place. These are things that we added. We had the funding for it, um, to, to actually keep these buildings, uh, running. So that was, that was a, a, a big job that had to be done this summer. Um, they have completed it, and, uh, the heating system is currently, um, running as soon as we turn it on. Um, and then we did, uh, VCT flooring repairs in the sixth grade wing, uh, a few classrooms, um, that needed to be, uh, done. So those were the, the major projects that, uh, got done at, um, i- it within the district. We did, um, have to, uh, do some miscellaneous painting at Dale Street and, uh, I've got a replacement. But the, 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 the big, um, the big issue that just came up, Dale Street, a few weeks ago during the rainstorm, was that the roof is failing. And, um, the one of the rooms located in the back of the building has been closed off. Um, we are now working with a, um, the insurance company is, they're gonna have, they're bringing in a trailer, uh, as a portable classroom so that students can use that portable classrooms while that section of Dale Street is closed off, uh, to do those repairs. So we will be going probably to, uh, the selectmen for emergency repair on that roof. Um, we're trying to get the bids, they, they're coming in and out. It's not a big section. It affects one classroom, but you'll probably be seeing a temporary classroom in that area, I would say, for a good, uh, five to six weeks at least. Um, so we're working again with the insurance company to, um, install that classroom and make sure that, uh, we are equipped with the Wi-Fi and everything that we need. Um, that, uh, is scheduled to happen, I believe, beginning of next week. We're just waiting for, uh, that portable classroom to, um, be placed. Correct. Correct. Uh, because it was, uh, caused by, uh, a rainstorm that came in. Um, you know, uh, they, they actually closed off that section of the school that they, um, they feel that it's unsafe at this, at this time until we get that repaired and fixed, which has to happen. Uh, there's been a lot of maintenance that has been deferred in, in that building, and I think Dr. Mastin will talk about that a little bit later on. Um, but this is something that we weren't expecting. And, um, you know, students have to learn, so we need to get that classroom running.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we do have to remember today that because of the audio problems, we kind of had to designate who's going to talk. Sorry. Um, sorry, more out of inconvenience than, uh, who's got their volume up? Michael. Okay. All right. So, uh, Michael, I was also gonna, uh, have you do the budget update for fiscal year 22 before I took public comment on either one of those? So. Hit it.
Um. Uh, such as. Okay. So, um, so we're currently pretty busy in, in the, the business office. Uh, we opened up fiscal year 22. Um, we spent the first three weeks, um, getting all the new employees, um, in, into the, uh, payroll system. Um, I can tell you that we're currently on budget for payroll. Um, we're focusing on opening up fiscal year 22, but we're also closing out fiscal year 21 and doing the end of year report that we do every year and submit to the state. Uh, yeah, we, um, are currently looking at, uh, the grants that were issued this year. Um, this year, we did receive the 240 grant as we do every year. Um, but we also received the Title I, Title II, and Title IV grant, uh, that we were eligible for this year, so that's, that's good news. Um, and, uh, both, uh, Christine Power and Mary Brule are working alongside with me to get those grants, um, written. Uh, we do also have the SO3 grant that, um, uh, is due in October, uh, and there's certain, um, requirements for that, that we have to meet. Uh, so we are working together, uh, with Dr. Mastin to, to get that also written. We, uh, did, uh, occur some COVID costs, um, that, um, uh, we will look, be looking at to put into the S R accounts such as, um, additional air purifiers. We did purchase more facial masks as the requirement, uh, right now is that all students and staff and, uh, visitors wear, um, facial masks for the, until October 1st. Um, we purchased, um, uh, tables here at the high school, uh, so, uh, that the students can go outside, uh, and have a bunch of, uh, outside. We tried to accommodate all, uh, the, between the elementaries and the middle school, two different areas for, identify two different areas for, um, students to have lunch, and, uh, there was a cost associated with that also. Um, but we feel pretty confident that, uh, those, we can manage those costs between that new, uh, S R 3. Correct.
So, Dr. Marston, can you just quickly speak to, um, why? Why we are able to apply for Title I, Title IV, and we lost Title I a while ago? So that is about different numbers within our census.
Right. So Title I is basically, you know, it, it takes a look at, um, your, your need, your students of need within the district. I'm gonna use a few indicators for that. We did not, we actually lost Title I, I think it was three years ago, and we just got it back in, in FY '22. So, um, with that, I mean, you always hear me complaining about the fact that when the federal government disperses money, they use that Title I formula, which doesn't really impact us really, really well. We ended up, like, for instance, with the S R 3, I think we're, Michael, we had 376 or something? Yeah, 376,000 where, you know, people around us are getting millions, right? So that, um, it, it's something, and we're happy for it, but it's, it's not the same as others get. So we're excited that we at least qualify for Title I now and get some of these funds, which is really something that we, you know, we were looking to do, and we're able to, uh, add a, additional position for, uh, support in, in mathematics at younger grades. So that's, that's something that was important to us, and it allows us to do that at this point, so.
Yeah. So, uh, and that's one of the things that I wanted to point out because I, I know this, that when we lost Title I funding three years ago, um, that doesn't just affect, uh, the kids that, you know, or the families, that Title I allows us to be eligible. That is funding that happens for everyone. It truly is, uh, a leveling up funding for every kid in the district. So while I would never, you know, be thrilled that there are families that are struggling, it certainly is a help for every kid. So, uh, if my reaction seemed a little strange, it's because that really does help everyone, and it helps level all of us up. And the fact that we were able to do the math.
Right.
Assistant.
And if you remember correctly, when we lost Title I, I forget what fiscal year it was. Um, we didn't find out until the beginning of August. So we had planned for that in that particular fiscal year's budget, and then we found out in August that they were, you know, they weren't, weren't funding, we didn't qualify. And, and when I called Desi on it, um, they said that based on our data, we could be going back and forth, back and forth, you know? So we're, now we're in the, we qualify phase again, and we may be in a situation in a couple of years that we don't again, but, you know, we'll, we'll certainly use it to our advantage when we do get it and, and support kids with it. So that, that's important.
Okay. All right. Uh, Michael, do you have anything else? For us? No? Okay. Then I will hand this over to the committee. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Raise your hand so I can turn my audio off, and you can turn yours on. We're good? Okay. Any, uh, public comment? Nope. I've got two people here now. Oh, man. All right. Well. All right. So we do not appear to have, uh, public comment right now. Um, so I will move on to, uh, the, um, 2021 subcommittee appointments. Um, I've spoken to everybody on the committee individually, and all of you have expressed, uh, although speak now or forever hold your peace, that you would like to remain essentially on the same subcommittees. Except that I. Anime. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Not your phone, I'm just moving you.
Do I still have? It's working beautiful. All right. So now we don't have. Um, yeah, I think we can just talk. But if you're curious about what just happened, uh, and then I'm gonna look at this camera, actually. Get out of Zoom if I can. Oh, and is it okay to get out of Zoom? Great. Thank you. Uh, if you're wondering what happened out there. We just, uh, got our, um, camera working that, um, so we just got our camera working that we had intended to use at the very beginning of the meeting. So thank you again for bearing with us through yet another spate of technical difficulties. All right. So on the policy subcommittee, Tim Knight and Megan Glenn, you have, uh, Tim is not here tonight, but you have both agreed to be, uh, willing to do that. So, um, I think we should probably vote that. If that is something. I think we wanna vote them individually, wanna make sure, because there is a change to one's motion. So, um, do I hear a motion to approve Tim Knight and then Glenn for the policy subcommittee? Yeah. Anime seconds, and then I will take a round of yays or nays, ayes or nays.
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you. It's, I literally have done two, two live meetings at this point in a year. So all in favor? Aye. Okay. And definitions, no? So pass unanimously. The second one is a small change in that, uh, on the fiscal year 22 budget subcommittee, which is, uh, we're pointing it slightly early, um, but I think that we can save with you. So, um, it's going to be me, Jessica Riley, and Megan Glenn. And you're all right with that, and then we'll win off of that. Okay. Um, so let's, uh, unless there's objections, you have a motion to approve that?
Salute.
All right. And second? Second? And the, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. And then, uh, the liaison to the, uh, school building committee. I don't know, do we need to? This is not necessarily a policy subcommittee, it's a simply a.
Revoated.
Do we already voted? Or do we, uh? Um, just, okay. We'll revote then. So, uh, as liaisons to the school building committee, it's Anime O'Shea Brook and Leo Bram have both indicated to me that they would be willing to continue to participate in that. Uh, Megan, or anybody else? Any objections? So do you want to hear a motion to approve? Okay. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Great. So that passed unanimously. Wow. Do I have any, um, public feedback? Public participation comments? No? So. Uh, the next item. the next item is I'll go right to policy, and then we'll talk about communication. That's all you guys. So we are doing the first reading of the Medfield M A F C policy project for let me bring these up because it's not a small list. Smaller than the full list. And you are my policy hero right now. So thank you. This is for policies J B, which is educational equal educational opportunities. And J B B equal you can read them all. I have to. Educational equity. J C is attendance areas. Assignment of students to schools is J C A. Sorry, and J F is school admissions. Sorry, I'm doing left hand. My apologies. J F A B C, which is students attending the Medfield Public Schools. J F A B C, admission of transfer students. J H D exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. J I C student conduct. We're close. J I C is long. J I C F A dash E, which is chapter two sixty nine. S. Section seventeen crime of hazing definition and penalty. So it's hazing. And we see J I C H alcohol used by students. J I C, sorry, J I E pregnant students. J J E co curricular and extracurricular activities. And that, my friends, is the list. This is the first reading of all of those. Many of them are simple replacements, it appears. Megan, I don't know if you want to speak to that. Around language and small things, but I do think that it's always important for us, even if it's just language, I can take a look through and see what the policy, you know, the kind of how it.
So similar to last meeting when I went through the A policies and just did a very quick synopsis of what if there are any changes or things that we probably should have discussed in some of these policies, I did that with this section as well. So I'll just start with the beginning J B, and I'm not going to read read it again since you just did. So our policy is is fine and up to date except for adding to the list of protected categories. There you go. Protective categories of pregnant or pregnancy related conditions, which would sound like pregnant to me. So that is a very slight change, but one that we need to make and add to our policy. J B B, there was a suggested inclusion by M S A C or M A C.
M A S C.
Yep, that.
I know.
That we need, this was a policy that we don't have, so it would be totally new to us. J B B. Which is educational equity. Correct. And I believe I asked Mary Brule to also look over this to see if we had this sort of under a different umbrella of policy. But nonetheless, if N A S E wants us to have it in this section. Why we shouldn't. J C and actually J C A are really both policies that the M A S C wanted us to add cross references to, but really they have to do with districts that have neighborhood schools, which we do not. And so I'm happy to keep these policies in the event that something changes in that deal, but I really don't think that they're actually relevant to. I think that there are ways that we could probably change it. It has certainly been as I've been looking for the ways that we can change it that are Medfield specific, right, general enough, right, within a policy that if we need to change. Right, we can. And obviously, Dr. Marston should weigh in on that, but we should also always with all of these policies, except for the most ministerial changes have our attorney as well, right? Which is a fairly fast freeze, but for a lot of these. Okay, J C, now we're on J F. That's an easy one. It was they just would like us to have three cross references, but our policy is good and up to date and school admissions. That would be school admissions, yes. J F A B C. The difference between our policy and the J F A B C policy of M A S C was the inclusion of verbiage about charter schools. And again, Dr. Marston could probably answer this one. I'm not sure how much relevance that has to Medfield. So the question is, would we want to add the paragraph that M A S C provides in terms of enrollment of children who have left the Commonwealth Charter Schools? Put it into our policy or leave it as it is.
No, I think you got to, you got to have that. We could, yeah, we definitely could.
So then that is a matter of just merging that together. There are also a couple of, you know, a pain in the body about this, but there are a couple of non standardized corrections in terms of proper nouns and how we refer to the districts and things that probably
he and she.
We can just send her to Emery and N A S C, but certainly, you know, this, this is our document. So we want to make sure that it's correct as possible, not to mention that we're schooling this embarrassing. J H D is exclusion, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance. M A S C says they would strike the highlighted. Well, in case you don't have it pulled up. Yes, having been expelled during the same school year from this district or any district in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, we should strike that.
Yes, okay. You can't restrict. So that needs to go. J I C, our current policy is right, they want to call it student discipline instead of student conduct. So it's both a name change. And then the M A S C policy is much more comprehensive. And it really lays out based on that's the regulation and law, the procedural requirements of basically appealing a suspension, et cetera, et cetera.
And that's essentially prescriptive within the law, right?
It is.
Matter, right. And it looks like ours hasn't been reviewed since two thousand and one. So.
So but our handbooks have the most updated stuff in there too. So that, you know, that is important. I would say on that, I'd like any look at those because what they failed to mention near is thirty seven eight and three quarters, which was added. So you have thirty seven eight, thirty seven eight, thirty seven eight and a half, and so thirty seven eight and three quarters should be in there. So I think that, I mean, that three quarters is what took away the expulsion piece. We can't deny it. And there's that whole piece around that. So I think, you know, that's the most recent that was, I don't know, maybe three years ago. So we want to make sure that that piece that's included into the.
J I C F A.
Slash E. Yeah, they just have a an extra paragraph at the end of the model policy that they provided. And it looks like it's very, it's exactly the same as our policy up until that point.
So it's just. We should make a special note of the last.
Right, yeah. For the Medfield J I C G and J I C H. Basically, could we combine the two of those policies into one, which becomes the model that the M A S C is using? So instead of using tobacco and alcohol, it's now tobacco, alcohol drug by student use. And then while we were talking to Glenn Kuchar from M A S C, it was the idea was that instead of laying out the basically the sanctions, which is what our current policy does, we leave it sort of the activity, like the student under the influence of drugs, alcohol beverages during attendance, it will be barf medic to be maybe subject to disclary action as outlined in the school handbook and leave it to be linked to the school handbook. So it can be revisited that way instead of revisiting the policy. So that was what Tim and I were suggesting. Okay. And that way, whatever restorative programs that we might be adding could also be addressed in the handbook as well instead of sanctions. So and then J I E, pregnant women do not need a physician's note anymore to attend school pregnant. So we need to change that. And then again, fairly prescriptive in terms of title five, yes. The last one that I have there, it was not flagged by M A S C. It was fine. I had just questions to bring to you all as a committee because there are some things that I found in there that if I'm going to approve this as a policy that I that we follow, I felt like I needed clarification on that, whether or not this actually wasn't policy that we followed. And specifically within section three and five. Just, I mean, I've been serving on the budget committee. This will be now my third or fourth year, and I don't and maybe I just haven't seen it, but I don't know that I see the breakouts as far as
in terms of the equal opportunity, including budgetary allocations for both female and male students in the student body is that the
I was looking at five, it says this in order to ensure fair distribution of athletic expenditures, each school shall indicate in the budget that is reviewed by a school committee, which would be, you know, asked the anticipated expenditure for each inter school act and intramural activity.
And the anticipated student participation in the activity by number.
Right. I don't know how that it just seems very, very specific.
Right. I don't know that that. I think that probably one of those things that gets covered, Jeff, currently if I'm wrong within the budget. And by approving the budget, we have also approved that, like, there are so many other things that we technically approve, but what what's
Well, you don't have to, but I don't want to have this policy and say that we do it if we don't.
Michael, the week reporting anything like this, like participation numbers of athletics to state entities at all?
So the applied director does does report the number of students that participate quite regularly. On the budget side, we break down by the best account structure by school by function. But we don't tie it back to students.
That's a, that wouldn't break out gender.
So although I think perhaps there's room for additional discussion around gender within this, within this policy. However, this is prescribed.
Right. And it's fairly new, two thousand and eighteen. I mean, now that we're almost in twenty two, it doesn't sound new, but it's not an old policy. So, yeah, I just wanted to to discuss it more.
Okay. Well, let's do it. All right. On the second reading, we'll come back and we'll kind of have a breakout of what it is we want to do.
Yeah, and obviously I wouldn't just keep it just plastic going to mural athletic activity. Stuff that we offer to our students that I think should also be, you know, as equal opportunities as well. So I think that maybe it's just a different look at it, whether it needs to be a policy or not. I don't know, but just.
Well, I think we can, you know, appreciate it. I think there's a couple of things that are involved here, one of what the M I A A regulations are around this, which is going to have a role there in this. Our discussions around equity in general as a district, once we have the diversity of equity inclusion. And kind of, you know, if we have Mary kind of take a look at this as our title nine civil rights coordinator, Jeff and Andy, then we can really kind of come together and figure out, like, are we, are we weighing this in the letter of the law, but not necessarily spirit, or is this just something that, you know, is prescribed across?
Yeah, maybe you can, you could break this down if you need to, you know, we can, we can break it down. And I think even with signing the bills, you know, you see what we spend in every sport and every, you know, for equipment, everything else. I mean, the stipends we give teachers, those kinds of things. So we can certainly break that if we need to.
I don't think, you know, there's been anybody out there howling, you know, like this doesn't, or this isn't, or this is.
I guess it's just something that, if it's something that could be done systemically, like through a tagging system and the financial package, like will you tag? This expense, you know, a budget or whatever, so that you can just write a report. So it's not like laborious every single time.
I think. And I, because I sign the warrants, I see them as they come through, but I have
so you're not anticipating something coming through, and there's no organization really to it, is what I'm saying.
No, I think it definitely is a report. It's just kind of like this.
Thank you. So that was, that's Jade part. Can you remind me how many policies we actually have at this point? Because I, I mean, I have been reading them for years, but they're just like how many total? Yeah, what's on the spreadsheet? Oh, your spreadsheet.
This is nothing. Yeah.
Oh, that's just not the, that's, that's just.
A and J I added C yesterday.
All right. Okay. So actually, let me just talk a little bit now about kind of how we want to process this because I did not want to go through and go on the second reading of the A policies and the first reading of these. I wanted these to go in first reading because they're kind of intensive and we need to have a lot of people look at them at the A policies, which we'll get to in old business. I also need stakeholders to take a look at. So it's unlikely that we will vote on these policies, the ones that we read tonight until November fourth, which is we will vote on the policies on the A policies unless there is a serious concern one way or the other. And we want to pull one out on October seventh. By October, by October seventh, I think I'm going to be asking about feedback from the committee on the flow and the process of this. Once we had a couple of meetings to get through it because we really need to kind of keep the end of moving on this and we really want to make sure that we honor some of the policies to make sure that it's not just the language, but it's really discussion around what what we want as a committee. And if we find that we are getting stuck in some places, so there's more intensive work to do on one or two, and we're not voting that kind of tranche because we're stuck, I'd like to run a couple of workshops, but I do not want to do it in a year that ends in twenty one. Just because we are so stacked right now. So if we have ones that we need to parking lot so that we can really look at them and understand them, I'd like to do that. But as we're going through, I'd like to identify that, and I'd like to have your feedback on how we're going through the process right now. So don't talk to me about it until October seventh, unless you want to.
I just wanted to add that we're a sub role that and this is question really for Andrea. I I put on your desk and said, these need to go to these people. Did those get? Okay. Because there are several more that I before I maybe bring you. Because there are several more that I, before I may be bringing to you, need to be looked at by. By our stakeholders, yeah, yeah.
So let's make sure that we're kind of getting a process for that going as well, maybe we should just put our heads together, figure out how we turn through that.
So the, the second reading of A will be tonight, but we're going to vote on it.
We'll vote on it, I'm willing.
Tonight or October?
October.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I'm going to postpone it until October, because I think there's a month there that I want to make sure that we're really looking at.
Yeah, I think once you guys get into a cadence, because it's going to, there's a lot to go through.
There is a lot to go through, but it's also our first go around.
Sure.
So, okay, um, with that, is there any other committee discussion on the J policies right now for this first reading? Okay, all right, then I'm going to call for public comment, if anybody would like to make public comment, public comment is taken at the podium, and we'll have three minutes. So, Chris or Rob? Okay. All right. Next, okay. School committee, public communication overview and next steps. So I think in general this year, and especially since uh, the pandemic happened. We have been trying to kind of put more out, right, and to be able more more available in terms of public participation, and that people can view us, see us, communicate with us through email, and all these other things. But I know that this is something that we've talked about a great deal, and now that we are returning to in-person meetings, however they may be. Um, I think it's a good idea to kind of talk about how, how we want to do that, what we have previous to um, the, the pandemic, and I think that we should probably return to this. We did, obviously did not use Zoom, we were never able to livestream, we always had to record, and then it would get uploaded to Medfield TV. So with the owl camera, should we not have people want to come, or if we want to continue the owl camera throughout, we do not need Medfield TV to come in, set up all of their equipment. And, um, but it does not stream to the cable channels. Um, and I know you're saying, what's cable? But, but it doesn't stream to the cable channels, it does stream to Zoom, and then ostensibly, we should be able to probably after this step, streaming at the same time to YouTube, um, which does kind of put us out to a broader, more immediate.
YouTube now, correct?
Yeah, I don't.
So I think, I think I like the idea of the the owl camera being a new part of our meeting process. I think that's, you know, about time, probably, uh, but I, you know, still believe that interaction, you know, as a community for public comp, but I think it definitely, you know, it brings a whole, you know, more, you know, a more up-to-date uh, approach to involving the community. And it's fun to watch.
I would definitely like to keep the interaction with the, with the public via remote as well. I feel like, um, I mean, even tonight, how many sixteen, seventeen people?
I don't know, I never went to the participants.
Oh, I did, yes, so sixteen, seventeen people, and I think that's sixteen, seventeen people engaged. Like, you know, whether or not they, they feel comfortable to come or what have you.
Whether or not they're popping their popcorn and getting their chips to the discipline.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I, I haven't, um, makes the, you know, I'm personally open to, you know, taking questions, but I know some people aren't into that and, um, but I think as long as we are available to our, you know, our families, our citizens, citizens in Medfield, I think, you know, we continue to, to do this.
I wonder if there's a way, this is one of the things I've been thinking, that when there are issues that are kind of what we would consider to be major importance, right? Which is part of our policy, that when we feel like there's something that we really need input on. If we would be willing to open those particular issues to Zoom and announce that within our agenda ahead of time, you know, we would take comment on Zoom for this issue that we see as kind of a larger issue, for instance, masks.
Yeah, I would.
But we also specifically open a Google Doc to the stakeholders, for instance, with masks, we sent out a Google Doc to our parents, because we really felt it was important to get all of the information and all of feelings and concerns out there and put it down, and people really responded to that, and I feel like we got a lot of really good data out of that.
Yeah.
Um, and perhaps that's something that as we're looking at constructing our agenda, and we see things coming on the horizon, because very rarely are these things surprises. We are able to kind of open that up in a more informal way than a hearing, but make it a forum or kind of a period of time for that meeting, for the talkback, so. You guys have thoughts about that, because I'm a little concerned about the efficiency of.
No, I understand, I understand, but, um.
We've kind of lost our rhythm in a lot of ways.
Yeah, so I can't, it's the board of selectmen, they need in person. Do they, do they only take questions from?
They take questions from the audience, they also take questions from Zoom, I think, and the Q and A, however. I would venture to say that they have more constituents than fewer that are incredibly passionate about some some items, you know, like, so, so they would generally have maybe four or five questions within a meeting, but once we got on Zoom and we were trying to keep track of that for Q and A, people were just bombing us in a way that we could not respond effectively to the community at all. So if we are able to kind of put out a more holistic way of reaching people, both through Zoom, if we were to do a public forum around things that are of great importance, and and through email, and we made our kind of expectations explicit around that. I also think that there's a little bit of a Q and A and video issue, and that people do not come over on video.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And that there is really a kind of a public records part to to our meetings, whether they are on Zoom or in person, and then we have a legal obligation to, you know, ask people to present their, their name and their address, and it becomes part of the public record, and quite often, you know, if people aren't turning on video, or somebody can't turn on video because they're on their phone, or you can't, you know, like, it becomes kind of a.
Just have guidelines that need to be met in order for that to occur, you know, camera on, state your name.
But we tried that, right? And some go like, I don't know.
And then are you just going to sit there? I mean, you know, I declared that I would not be taking, you know, input from Buddha, and, you know, like, it's not. I am sorry if you're Buddha, but.
But I feel, I, I agree. Comes this, you know, side jargon with people firing off questions and opinions and.
And questions and opinions that can't necessarily be seen by other people, and we answer some, but not others. That becomes to me. Around ethics, so.
Unless, as Jeff said earlier, I, because I don't think everything should be, I mean, if we've got a hot topic, that should just be live. I mean, people might not be comfortable to come in, I don't think that's fair. So if it is a hot topic, you know, um, Google form or what have you, I just, it's just, it's too early to absolutely dictate all live.
Oh, yeah.
I would lie them at like, even turn the camera on, so to me that's live too.
Yes.
But the Q and A, the Q and A part is, some of our meetings have just turned into, you know.
Or not even turn the camera on, at least just see, you know, I'm, I'm with that. Yeah, if you're on your phone.
But, but with the owl camera and with the Zoom, and, you know, like, we have audio problems if we Zoom, right?
No.
And we owl, and, yeah, right? So we've already seen it tonight, so I think this probably bodes a little bit more conversation, but for right now, we'll continue to open things up, and we do check our email regularly. I return all letters and, and public participation legally is truly just being able to see what happens in the meeting. My understanding from a lot of the other school committees and school committee chairs that I have spoken to is that we are significantly more liberal with allowing people to speak within the meeting, and whether that's true or not, that's the culture of our town, and I'm, I'm good with it, but we do need to be able to find a way to make it more efficient, so we can efficiently run the business of the, of the district, and clearly I take up a lot of time talking, so. I'm kidding, but I do think it's a philosophical issue, and we always do emphasize at this point that we have email, you know, like, this is something we started putting in our agendas. This is our email, this is how you can watch, this is what you do, but I think that we can probably make those.
I, I, I hear the point you're making, that we, I didn't realize that you're using the owl. This is not a Zoom thing, there's no way for them.
We're just getting feedback.
But what I do like about although this is a sort of a weird panorama, and I'm not on it at all right now, but that's okay.
Your voice is very low, well, I wondered about that.
Okay, I'm little, um. What I do appreciate is that this can be either up immediately or available after the meeting, because the lag in.
So this can be up immediate, yes, and it is up immediately on Zoom, you can watch at five. But once we get the credentials to the Medfield TV YouTube, then we'll be able to go, and it'll be on YouTube, and then it'll just be there, and that's the best part. And that's the best part, I, I think that we should probably consider getting a specific. Okay, so.
But I just want to mention those emails that you're sending out families beforehand through Austin, that has been a huge help in, in trying to engage the community, so I think that's been fantastic, so thank you very much for doing that.
Absolutely, um, and actually, it was one of the things I was going to say, that we're trying to distribute our agendas beforehand, and just at least kind of bullet point some of the items that we're talking about and voting on. However, you know, if you do not have a child in the school, you do not have your email address. And some of that is fairly parent-specific, but there's only, you know, there's only so much specific outreach.
Yeah.
We can do, but I do, uh, think that that's been really helpful. Clearly, everybody knew that they would be forward tonight.
But even if parents don't show up or don't, you know, watch it on Zoom, they know what's going on. It's a constant reminder of what the agenda is, what the items you're talking about, it's great.
And then, uh, one of the other things I want to just quickly talk about is our very failing history with office hours. And I wonder if now in the age of Zoom, we've been doing Zoom office hours, we've tried them here or there, but they, I would very much prefer to have those if we were going to do them, because I find that they're huge. Quite often, people don't attend them, you know, certainly before the pandemic, we would kind of sit in rooms stare at each other for a while, I always have a good laugh, but, you know, sometimes people come, sometimes people wouldn't.
I think people came when we had like big topics, you know, override or something, then you have like ten people show up in a Dale Street cafeteria.
There were other times where people wanted to discuss something that they thought was very personal, and then we have a bunch of people come. And I wonder if we decide to begin those again, and I am not proposing this again for the next several months, I think that we're doing okay, we are out there. But if we decide that we want to start them again, because they are labor-intensive, and there have, there really should be two of us there. I would like to have that, even if it's by Zoom, have it by appointment. You know, it's a time that you can come talk to us face-to-face or on Zoom, but I, I think that people have the right to have their own time with that, so, but that's my opinion, I don't know how you guys.
That's cool, I mean, they have things like Calendly where people can look at or something, you know, they kind of say, we could do it between these times, where people book a time, and and there are programs for that.
So I know that there have been times like it, when you were talking about it, somebody specifically wanted to talk to me about a bullying concern they had, and a policy thing. But there were five other people who really wanted to talk to me about this very different other thing, and I was like, I really wanted to be able to have that first meal, have the, the concentration at the time, so. Okay, um, so this comes to me wrapping this discussion up, uh, in, if we're comfortable with that, um, at, at some point. Because we are all doing these things ad hoc, and we have really kind of increased the amount of uh, communication that the school committee have done, I mean, from where you and I probably started over the last three years, it's just a very different kind of place in terms of that, and, and I respect it and I enjoy it, but a lot of us are doing these things ad hoc, because we do enjoy them, because they're part of our skill set, um, but we should probably have a short-term committee to kind of put together, you know, uh, we used to call us, like, if you moved to New Jersey, and somebody else has to take over your spot, or at some point, we're all going to be gone. How do we continue this? Because it is only within your systems that anything succeeds long-term, so I'd like to think about not now. You know, it seems like I'm deferring a lot, in January it might be less work, but I know that's not true. But at some point, I would really like to really think about having a short-term subcommittee to bring all of these things together and really think about who can do that, and how we write that down, and how we make that work forever, right? Kind of building out that kind of systems part.
You've already started that, right? You did the calendar, kind of the onboarding, you know, piece you did, so I think you've already started.
The manual.
The manual, right.
Constantly, constantly.
It's been in motion, but, you know, there's been, we've had other things, so we can kind of revisit, and, yeah.
But I think that we've made some, some progress on, yeah, so. Okay, with that, uh, would anyone like to have public comment on either one of those two? For the podium, thanks, Chris.
So you can hear her.
Apparently, who do you in the Blowfish Camp? Yes.
I really appreciate the effort that I've seen over the last year and a half.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris, would you please give your name and your address? Thank you.
But I sincerely appreciate the effort that I got that you guys have put in to try to broaden communications with the community, I think that's really, really important. You know, this is my, as I was walking, I was counting years, and this is my eighth year of attending school meetings. And, um, probably one of the biggest questions that I get from people who really want to learn how, how a school community operates, is how do they get them on the agenda? And this fits in with the whole communications plan, and that is a question, you know, because when you look at the school policy, and you guys are going through the school policy, it's really not, there's no mandatory language, it's sort of, it will be considered, you know, that something will be, if you want to bring, get something on the agenda, you bring it forth, but there's no guarantee it's going to get on the agenda. You guys probably aren't aware, but last year, uh, before the pandemic, we had a citizen's petition that was signed by a lot of people to try and get some kind of mechanism for citizens to actually be able to request a public forum or a public here. Um, and we had a lot of people that were interested in that, we just couldn't figure out the mechanism of it, and that pandemic hit, and Christine Trueller asked if we would just postpone it, and then we just kind of let it go with everything else going on. But I think it's really important, um, for committees to really think about, you know, when do you put something on the agenda? When do you hold a public forum, based on what level of interest in the community? So it's not the school committee determining a, a topic that's, that's important, but you're giving the stakeholders the opportunity to determine, gee, this is really important to us. How do we get you guys to talk about it and have dialogue? So I would just bring that forth as something to think about.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate it. Okay. Do we have other items since posting on September third?
We do, I'm sure.
Okay, then we are going on to old business. So then we can go on to the Medfield M A S C Policy Project second reading, and as I said, there's not going to be a vote on this tonight. But if you have specific questions as you go through the policies, or if you'd like to deliberate on a specific policy, we can, we can look at that now, or you can send your feedback to Megan. Many of my kind of concerns, like I said, uh, there are some that need to be reviewed by Andy, and some that clearly need to be reviewed by the wellness team. And then there are just a couple, uh, what, tobacco and no, it wasn't tobacco, is that the one that we, that was, right? Or is it also? Sorry. I can go back to my computer. But if there are any things there, I mean, like I said, I, I have some kind of like dramatic type of things, but a lot of the stuff that was, um, a lot of things were in there that. A lot of things were in there that were just an easy switch out. In terms of language, there are a lot of, just so people know, kind of at home, a lot of these policies have things like instead of saying the public schools. MASC really says that it is best to say the school district. You know, kind of very small things.
And the, uh, the documents that appeared in the packet this week. I tried to highlight any proposed changes that you would see exactly. What had been changed if we do go to approve and that would then become what the policy would look like.
Okay. So again, do we have any public input on the second reading or Megan, would you like to? Oh, thank you. Okay. This was file AD, the people and their school district and. A D D A, which is background checks, which is, uh, looks to be a simple switch out with. Whatever the, um, the current. Laws are around that, but we're running it by Andy, our attorney, to make sure that it applies to everything for us. And then there's A D D A R. Were we going to try to combine that or would we just?
That was just a recommended addition.
Okay, so that's something that we are also running by. And then A D F, which is the wellness policy, which I think, uh, you know, given that we have so much emphasis on, on wellness. It's such a significant part of our curriculum that we have some, you know, really specific ideas about mental health and wellness as well. I'd really feel much better if we had our wellness folks take a look at that and then also be able to understand what the policy is so that they can do their every three year. Review of that and know that we're keeping up with the curriculum and the kind of modern science around wellness, which I think is one of the things that we were really concerned about. Particularly in things like I was thinking about. Some of the dietary kind of instruction we give and are we actually appreciating the full range of. Eating disorders that can be out there and are we teaching kids things that we don't necessarily, are they having unintended consequences around that? You know, and that these are things that are discussions everywhere. So just make sure that we're really keeping on top of that and we do know. Like I said, if you have input into those, we will be voting those next. All right, comment on that or any more? All right, so we're on the downhill stretch. Let me dig in down the public comment on donations. Dr. Marsen, would you like to?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd ask you to approve the following donations, two hundred nineteen dollars and fifty six cents. To the Blake gift account from Stop and Shop eight plus school rewards program. And three hundred fifty nine dollars and forty four, excuse me, thirty four cents to the WeLog gift account from the Stop and Shop eight plus school rewards program. I ask that you accept those donations and present it.
Do I hear a motion to accept the nations as presented by Dr. Marsen? All right, so Leo, so moved and and May second?
Yes.
And your vote, does your eye or do I hear? All right, any opposed? No, okay, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, Dr. Marsen, you, I asked you to give kind of an elementary school update. Or elementary school project update specifically kind of around.
Sure, so we have a couple of things. I mean, we had our, our meeting last night with the Warren Committee. I had met with the Warren Committee with Mike Quinlan last week, representing the SPC. And then School Committee, Anna May and Jess met with the Warren Committee last night. Just to go over some of the questions, I think the Warren Committee is doing a wonderful job of that. I mean, I think they, you know, they want to get as much information as they can. And and make a decision based on all the information they get and I think they had five meetings, so. It was, it was a good experience and I'm really happy that they're doing that. So we hit a big milestone in the project this week with the submission of schematic design. I know that it was in your materials and I know that it's sixteen hundred pages.
But I read it.
Just kind of, I want just a quick overview of what is in a schematic design, just so folks know what that is. So the architectural characteristics are in there, the space summary, the education program, which is something that we put together. Part on instructional technology, relationships and critical adjacencies, which we spent a lot of time with. Making sure that our classrooms and our special education rooms were in the same learning area, in the same learning pod. Arrow Sheed did a great job of that with us, working with us on that. Security and visual access requirements, the sites development requirements, landscape narrative, which I know they've done a lot of work. We've worked with that consultant around landscaping, the massing study, which you've seen those before where we got to see exactly what the school would look like. And we, uh, which really was exciting because they superimposed the, the massing on an actual picture of the site, which is great. Traffic analysis, environmental assets, assuming assessments, geotechnical assessments, building code compliance. Plumbing and fire protection, mechanical narrative, electrical narrative, lighting narrative. Sustainable design features, sustainable building design, guided guideline documents, the construction methodology. Anticipated reimbursement rate and incentive points from MSBA, total project budget. And that's all in the volume one piece and then it goes into volume two, which are the appendices. The MSBA PSR review comments, the response to MSBA in our comments back. Education Plan Redline, Education Plan Clean, Building Code Report, Traffic Impact Report, Hybrid Flow Data. Mass Historical Commission, Archaeological Study Report, Design Cost Estimate, OPM's Cost Estimate. And get you down to the room data sheets of fifteen, page fifteen hundred sixty nine. So obviously a huge document and it's very prescriptive what, what MSBA wants. They did acknowledge receipt of that document, uh, so they have received it. We did a. Electronic submission to MSBA and then OPM dropped off a hard copy of MSBA as well this week. So we made all those timelines, which is great. We'll just wait for their feedback on that and then we'll be going to MSBA meeting. In October, so that is a, is a big milestone for the project to go through this process. And then one of the pieces that you want me to talk about too was what our last SPC meeting really focused on, which is our budget. So last Wednesday night, uh, we had our meeting and there was a lot of, I know that's in the materials and online, there's a lot of weeds and some of the other budget items there. But just as a, as an overview, uh, we had looked at the total project budget that include excluding contingencies. Was it seventy seven million, three hundred seventy six thousand nine hundred? Estimated maximum total facilities grant, which reimbursement from MSBA, eighteen million, five hundred eight thousand, seven hundred ninety three. And the probable town share, so excluding usage of contingencies. Was fifty eight million, eight hundred sixty eight thousand, one hundred and seven. So the total project with the built-in contingencies that are in there, you know, for construction and other things that come about. Eighty one million, eight hundred ninety three thousand, six hundred thirty, six hundred sixty three. In the maximum facilities grant on the total budget with contingencies, eighteen million, nine hundred twenty nine thousand, forty six. And the town share, we're looking at a twenty three percent town share on that project would be sixty two million. Nine hundred sixty four thousand, five hundred seventeen. So the current vote request. That we're, we looked at was not to exceed the eighty millions, eight ninety three, six, six, three. Uh, I think the biggest thing that has to come next is, so what does it mean to me as a resident? Right? I think that's the, the part that everyone's waiting for that's really critical so that we can communicate that, so that everyone can get a sense of. What is that financial impact to your own pocketbook? I think that's what people are concerned about. A lot of numbers out there, you know, how much is it going to cost for this or that? We want to make sure that we can articulate correctly what that tax impact is going to be to each individual household. So that folks can make a, make a decision based on, you know, what, what the impact is for them. So. Good to get that part down and to go over all of that, but I think the, the critical piece next is to really. Get that information of what that impact's going to be and then how we can communicate that between people.
So we're going to have that community forum regarding project costs and tax impact. On the twenty second of September.
And that is the SBC, just to be clear, that's not the school committee.
Correct, that is the SBC Community Forum on Project.
Because I think that it's one of those things that people get confused about sometimes is that, you know, there's such similar names, but really it is a town project. So, okay, um, and that was on the twenty eighth, I'm sorry. Twenty second.
So I was kind of hoping the high school auditorium.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I need to find out from Phyllis if that's available. But I think it's a serious topic. We need a serious space, so.
We'll check on that tomorrow. And I believe they're going to have that tax impact before that meeting.
Absolutely, because we have our next meeting on Wednesday, it's coming Wednesday to go over that.
Okay, um. Do I have any other comments from the committee itself on, on that? I do think it's important for us to kind of give an update in terms of like what. What that's going to look like. We do not have a special town meeting official date yet, just one of those, I would really like to see pretty soon. I'll have to take a look at what is on the selectmen's agenda to see.
I think they're going to talk about it very soon, yeah.
Yeah.
Just decide what kind of town meeting is going to be a Saturday town meeting, is going to be a weekday town meeting and they're trying to figure that kind of. The other piece too, uh, Warren Committee, we're going, they're going to be again Monday night.
Right.
Next Monday night and then. Sharon said last night, they're going to do. A couple of forum, then they're breaking up into smaller groups to find out information about some real key areas, traffic studies, costs, etc. Right, and then they're going to make a recommendation prior, it was two weeks prior. I should have written it down last night, but I didn't.
So the end of October.
End of October, right, so prior, two weeks prior to town meeting, that that's their timeline. Because what we were planning on, what we're thinking about, probably the first week in November. Good, look at capacity, do we have it inside, outside, whatever? I don't know where we're at with that right now, but if we were to have it inside, we would need. A lot of space within this building, not just the gym, but we have to look at the cafeteria, auditorium, classroom spaces.
Right. Okay, uh, but that will be the, is, that will be the single item on the. Agenda, so it's not like you would show up and then it might be possible to do that. Well, then maybe it's possible we have to stay the next night, but I can really only do one of those every five years or so. Okay. Now, I'll do whatever it takes. Okay. Do I have any public input into that? You do, okay, great, please approach the podium and I will assume that you continue to be Chris Potts.
Just want to make, just to, uh, make sure that the school, school committee is fully aware of. A very significant step in this process, which this has not really been mentioned all that much. There is a project scope and budget conference, which is a very significant step in this project and according to statute. The school committee chair and four members of the school committee. Have the complete ability to be at that project scope and budget conference, as well as many members of the selectmen. So I just think that that, that conference has not been mentioned very much at all as part of the schedule. And I think it's very important because school committee doesn't have care of custody control of the school. Buildings of the school site and pretty projects, and I think it's very important that school committee members are aware of that to go gather and are present for that. So just want to try to give that.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay. Next, I did ask Dr. Marsen to come and kind of just talk to us quickly. Since the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has not met officially yet, what happened at the end of the month. I did want to get an update though on where we are with our original decision around the logo and. Progress and also there have been challenges, you know, which are almost always money, but. Kind of just give us an idea of where we are and what we can do to help with those challenges.
So we have, you know, we've made some progress with moving, you know, the mascot as many places as we can. We still have a ways to go. I know everyone can think of a place right now when I say that where it's still there, because I can't do, I can think of multiple places where it's still there. But we, we tried to, to really get some of the areas that. Are used a lot, especially related to athletics. So we, we took it off the scoreboard, we put the M's on the scoreboard. The sign that has all the championships as you drive into this way, we took it off there, put the end there. We've tried to get, we targeted. Uniforms that had it in multiple places. Hockey being probably the one that had it on the most places, so we were able to do the, um, budget this, this summer, we were able to get additional. Or new hockey uniforms for varsity. Uh, I think the issue is that you have to really take into consideration is that we have varsity, junior varsity, freshmen and middle school sports. So as kids get, you know, as kids, as we get new uniforms for varsity, they get handed down, handed down, handed down. So, uh, we really want to target varsity first. It's probably the, the one that's the most visible to the community and certainly most people attend those games. So we were working on that, um, but it's going to take a few years to get down to some of the lower grades. And that, that's been our real focus is trying to, to get that, that particular piece. Obviously, the, the viewing area outside of the field has a lot, large mascot and turf. So we're looking at, um, just replacing that with plain turf, uh, because the M was putting them there, it was expensive. So we're, we're, we've talked to the turf company about that. We're trying to get some pricing on that as well. But that's going to be north of ten thousand, just to do that particular piece. And then I think we, we're trying to walk around the schools and try to get it everywhere we can. I think this school probably had it in most places. Just things that folks haven't really noticed in years, like this, put the bumper sticker on their door or, you know, those kinds of things, just kind of remind everyone to do that. We alerted all, we told all the coaches that they cannot order anything new, uh, with that, it has to be the M. We've been very clear with that and the coach has been great around that. But you know, you go around town, you still see it, right? We're, we're working with PTO, uh, to, on the, on the bins. Yeah, the textile bins, the Bay State textile bins, you get it off there, they're going to put them on there for us. They'll take a JPEG and do that for us. Uh, I think the, uh, the wall over in the Dale Street area, there's a big wall that whether it's lacrosse wall or tennis, whatever they use it for. It's there, it's a big one there. Um, so I think those are some of the areas that we're targeting. It's got to paint over that one. Is all we have to do and, but it's going to, it's going to take more than just one year and more, maybe more than just two years. Because it's, it's everywhere and I still see it, you know, with, with folks on their clothes and. So that, that's, it's going to take a little time to phase that out. I think that's. That's reasonable, I think, to expect that's going to take a little bit of time to phase out, something that's been, you know, fabric of the, the community for a long time. So it's going to take a little bit of time to phase that up. In terms of where we go with the name. We are going to be starting the Diversity Equity Inclusion Group and we'll be meeting, the first meeting at the end of the month if our consultant will work with. Can, can make that date, uh, and we're going to get everyone together and just kind of really talk about, you know, what some of the issues are that we want to address. And I know that's going to be one that is going to be part of that group to start talking about. So it's going to, you know, we're not going to just focus just on race. Or just diversity of the workforce that we feel like that, that discussion around the warrior is an important one to have within that group of people, which. You know, is community members, parents, kids, it's a lot, it's a wide group of folks there, uh, over thirty. So over thirty members, not age. So I think that's, you know, that's a step in the right direction, uh, but we definitely have some work to do. And I think that we'll, we'll give you periodic updates when we accomplish, I think, just a little hanging free, I think that wallet at Dale Street just needs to be painted over. That's an easy one to do. There's that storage shed by Dale Street that it actually has the former. One, uh, even before the, the most recent.
That you literally never see, there's just this shed and I know that it's there, I can place it, but I have no idea what it looks like. I just know it's there, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it safe to assume that once the DI task force gets going, that there will be education pieces that will be. Talk to our students or those conversations had with our students, you know, in terms of. I think a lot of students still think, what's the big deal, you know, so there's, there needs to be an education.
A lot of adults still think that.
No, it's hundred percent, hundred percent, but, um, so.
Yeah, I think that's, and that's, you know, part of what we're looking at with DEI is not only just. Training and, and with, with teachers and students, but we're looking at community workshops as well, how we can get the people engaged to kind of see what we're talking. How we can get the people engaged to kind of see what we're talking about here. You know, I think there are some people that felt it was reactive and, you know, I for one, this is the first day I met Jess, she's been talking about it, so it wasn't, it wasn't reactive. So I think that's something that
But then again, that's personal experience and understanding, right? And everybody has to have that moment.
Yeah.
That makes it real to them.
You know, we, we worked with a consultant on a retreat a few weeks ago. And, you know, one of the things she highlights, everyone's at a different place in their journey with us, right? So some people, part of what we did in the opening was explain, you know, where you're from, what your experiences with this and kind of talk about that. And my experience was different than Michael's, or different than that, or different than Robert's, or Mary's, or Christine's. We've all had different experiences. So it was fine, it was okay, you know? I mean, with me in the city, it was a lot different experience than that growing up in Sherwin, right? That's, that's a very different experience growing up. And I think that's, we talked a lot about that. And, you know, we, we had three or four hours of discussion on cultural responsive leadership. And that's what we're working on as a leadership team and, and working with a consultant on that who will be working with us at DEI. So it's, it's exciting stuff, it's, it's needed, it's important. And as I said on the first day, for those of you who are there, this isn't a check your list, you know, check the box kind of thing. This is something that is perpetual in the district, that is ongoing, that should be going on for many, many, many years.
And may change over time in the ways that our ideas and our understanding of people in the world change.
And it's uncomfortable for people and that's okay. That's part of the work.
As was algebra for me, so I don't want to joke about it necessarily. But it, it's true, you know, every learning is can be uncomfortable and also enlightening. And bringing someplace you didn't expect, so. Okay, is there anything the committee, Anna May, have a response to? Either one of you do either, how am I doing? Um. Anybody else? Okay, so then, do I have any public comment on that particular issue? Okay. The next thing is, the last thing, which is informational items. And I just want to say that our, our student rep will be here next month along with our student reps for each of the classes. And I actually am going to track Carrie down, because I'd really like to see what her perspective is and what her kind of cohort's perspective has been on the change in schedule at the high school. Once they've been in it for a period of time, I'd really like to hear from the students before I hear from anybody else about how they're experiencing it. So I think there's a stamina and leveling up kind of part to it, but I think at the end of the week. But we'll see. Does anybody else have informational items that they would like to mention? Dr. Marston?
Anyone else?
Anyone?
I just, are you going to be attending the webinar tomorrow with the MASC on? I'm not quite in.
And engaging the public in diversity at the initiatives.
Yes.
I will be, I have zoomed, but I will be watching the recording. So once you zoom, you can register for it. So unfortunately, I don't need. But you can sign up for it and they're excited about seeing it, so. And that, that person who does the school PR, I see him at the MASC conference previously. You know, he has really good points.
I just want to give kudos to opening school. Extremely smooth and my kids were really excited to be there. And the teachers seemed really excited for that. And so kudos to the administration, Dr. Marston, your team for getting us prepped, even though it felt like Groundhog Day again, oddly, to be honest. Last few weeks, I was like, oh, man, here we go again.
Just not so many groundhogs this year.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, with our past experience, obviously, we want to expect. And thank the community for just being patient as we got through it to that. And I got to give kudos to Michael, that I walked into the library like a brand new library. How bright it is when you walk in, it used to be so dark. It looks like a well lit hallway, it just, it looks amazing, so. I'm sure the students are enjoying it.
Kids love it, yeah, absolutely.
And just reading the new layout a little as well, so.
And with the flex program, you know, with the flex periods and stuff, they get a lot more chance to kind of spend time doing the things that you're supposed to do now. Booking in and booking out again, yeah. That was not an intended one. They just come. Okay, anyone else?
I just, I just want to say that, you know, we had a great opening. Teachers did a lot of work preparing, kids are great, a lot of great energy in all of our buildings. And, you know, people are rolling with the fact that they have to wear masks and they understand why. And I mean, not everyone loves it, and I don't think anyone loves it, but I think they understand that it's for the greater good and what we need to do at this point. And it keeps us in five days a week and that's what we need to do, so.
Right.
It's been very, very positive in the beginning.
Yeah. I have to say, it's probably one of the most positive entry years I've seen so far at least at my house. You know, they're really actually excited to be here, although they did. Okay, so if we are moving on with that, we are to future agenda items, which are the fiscal year 21 budget closeout in October. That sounds reasonable.
Michael's event?
Or do you need to bump that? Can you do it in October 7th? Okay, all right, there you go. School updates, we're going to split those into two, two periods, the elementary and the high school. One in October, one in November. And I've actually asked Dr. Morrison to really talk to him about focusing specifically on challenges and things that they need to, you know, that they're looking at kind of aspirationally from the next year, instead of like telling me everything went by and it was good. Like what's, which, maybe I'm getting old and crotchety, but this. And Blake Middle School Standards-Based Reporting Follow-up in November, and that will coincide with the school report that MHS NEA.
They did some great work on that one.
Yeah, good, great.
I met with Matt today.
The Medfield High School NEASC Evaluation Follow-up. Did I get the initials right there?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And we'll also do that in November, so that it's paired with their report. And then we will do the superintendent evaluation in December. Okay. So our next meeting is on October 9th, 7th, October 7th, sorry, 2021 at 7:00 PM. So do a year motion to adjourn. Leo, second, Anna May. And I do need to do a roll call for this one out. So I do. Leo.
Hi.
Okay, Megan Glenn?
Hi, yes.
Hi, Jessica Riley, hi. Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 8:53. And thank you so, so much.